Good afternoon and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Monday, December 21st, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the city's channel, city YouTube channel, excuse me. Our first order of business is public comment. Now, I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state their comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes. Our first speaker is Shaman Pohmai.
Greetings, greetings. Peace, love and light in Laka, everyone. Just to reaffirm what we've stated in several calls, city council members, your position must be in order with your home rule charter and function and exercise powers not denied by the Constitution and the laws of Pennsylvania, which are also in line with the Constitution. To be clear, as it relates to our people, the Aboriginal American people, Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, and excluding Indians not taxed, as it reads in the Constitution. Also, Bouvier's dictionary adapted to the Constitution explains that Indians, for the constitutional purposes, means the aborigines of this country are so-called. To be absolutely clear, we are not Title 25 Indians, Native Americans, whom are in fact not Aboriginal Americans, but are Choryak Russians, Mongolians, and of British descent by the United States Constitution's definition. According to the United States, they are under the jurisdiction of the United States. We are not. According to House Congress resolutions and many other bodies of law, reaffirms that our nation, the Aracua Confederacy of Nations, has our own government-to-government relationship. The police here in the city of Pittsburgh have done egregious acts to our people, acts that have not been made right or made whole. And we're using our voice to give you an opportunity to make sure that this happens. We are not under the jurisdiction of the United States government, and they must respect and honor that as they token of to the Constitution. And the word tax, according to the Constitution, as it relates to us, is not to impose a tax on, not to assess or handle, not to censure, not to charge, not to touch, not to handle, not to burden, and not to put a strain on, not to impose a tax, not to evaluate, estimate, or repose, or reprove anyone. And ADRIP and UNDRIP international law supports the rights of Indigenous women and the recognition of our protection to enjoy human rights and fundamental freedoms provided domestically and internationally by law. Free from any discrimination, our people have a collective action to our own judicial system, social, political, economic systems and institutions to our lands, territories, and resources. All states shall promote with the full and effective action and cooperate with us and our judicial personality, and must be recognized and acknowledged by the states as well. Rejection of assimilation is against international law and the Constitution as well. And states shall carry, not carry out or adopt any support of assimilating our people into being citizens, as we are not. These guarantees are for our protections and to guarantee our rights against racism and discrimination, xenophobia, and intolerance. And there are several other bodies of law that support this as well. So, moving forward in 2021, we look forward to continuing our government-to-government relationship and working to make legislation that is going to be beneficial for our people and for all people of this land. And I yield thank you and have a great holiday.
Thank you very much. To you as well. Our next speaker is Aikuhana Halmaukina.
My title is Aikuhana Halmaukina, the Grand Inca of the Aracua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. We are here to speak our peace onto the record. The reason for us to continue to do so is that we are being forcibly assimilated into your citizenry. We are on the record to say that we are not citizens. We are not residents. We are merely the people of the land. Aboriginal American people, to be clear, we are a separate yet distinctive community and body of people, governed by the Great Law of Peace, to which, as eloquently explained in House Congress Resolution 331, we are a separate yet distinctive body of people. And it is the duty of all municipalities, local, federal, and state, the United States government, to protect our rights, to secure our rights, to honor the people of the land, the people who were here before the boats arrived on our beautiful shores. And our land is not to be taken for light and transient reasons, as set forth in 1787 Northwest Ordinance. We are here in a place now where city council can set the tone for the rest of society, to redress and allow restitution to take place when the harms of our people throughout centuries has occurred. We are here to seek redress and land acquisition. We are here to restore our waters, to restore our polluted lands, and to re-educate people who are seeking to know more about their history. And that is why we are making our bid known to throughout city council and beyond, for our lands and places and spaces for us to worship sacredly in our land. And so, the Martin Luther King Cultural Center is one of those places and spaces. The Old Francis Street Project, the Old St. Clair Village, where there are acres awaiting development. We are asking for you all to do what is right and to turn over these lands and these places and spaces, so we can sacredly repair the land and the broken people who have been dealing with a broken system for far too long. We have children who are meaning to be adopted and cared for, and we do not expect anyone to stand in our way as we seek to heal those broken hearts, as we know.
Thank you. That does exhaust our list of registered speakers. That moves us on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith?
Here.
Ms. Strasburger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson? Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill OO91.
Bill 91 in ordinance providing funding for the City of Pittsburgh Park Tax Fund through a 0.50 mil increase to the property tax rate by adding sections 26304, City of Pittsburgh Park Tax Fund Levy, and Title II, Fiscal Article IX, Property Taxes, Chapter 263, Real Property Tax and Exemption.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
So, I am...
Yes.
Is there somebody with their microphone on? Maybe we have our microphones off. It'd be easier. Thank you. That this is unfortunate timing, and I have been opposed to the parks tax for, since it was on the ballot. And I think this is a terrible time to be enacting this tax. I don't believe that we're required to enact the taxes. Is there anyone here who can speak to that in the meeting? Do we have someone from the Law Department, or even if our own Budget Director? Is there anyone on the line, Mr. Chair?
I am looking. I do not see our Law Department on the line.
Would you like us to summon someone to the table?
That would be wonderful. And meanwhile, maybe Mr. Urbanic is prepared to...
Oh, okay. Anthony Island is coming in.
Thank you.
Hello, Anthony Island from City Law.
Hello, sir. Can you tell me, even though we know that this ballot question was on the ballot in 2019, it has been absolutely a full year since the voters narrowly voted for this after a million-dollar campaign. And I'm wondering if, to the best of your knowledge, if there's a timeframe by which council must act?
Yeah, I think the best course of action, you know, because I would be speaking as the attorney for the City of Pittsburgh, would not to be delivering that sort of legal advice in open counsel on this sort of matter or on any sort of proposed matters like that, but to, you know, deliver that advice in the form of a confidential opinion.
Fair enough. Mr. Urbanic? Are you ready to be on camera, Mr. Urbanic?
Yes, ma'am.
To the best of your knowledge, is there a timeframe by which council must act?
No, I understand, though, that there has been a legal opinion given to council. So, apparently, Mr. Island cannot speak to that.
Right. So, but to your answer is no, that there is not a timeframe by which council must act, or no, you don't know?
That's correct. Not to my knowledge.
So, again, I think that what we do know is that while the citizens voted to amend the Home Rule Charter, that in truth, the city council of the city of Pittsburgh is really the only body with the power to increase the millage. And so, we, it can only be collected once we vote. We don't have to vote it today. And I believe we should not vote it today. We know that households across the city are under incredible economic pressure. We know that people are struggling to meet their own mortgages. We know that people are struggling to meet their rent. And I believe a millage increase would be passed through to renters as well. And so, I don't think this is the right time to be doing this. Mr. Urbanic, do you know when this would be collected? Property taxes are collected in March and November?
The... I believe the reason why you're receiving this now, that if there is that change, that the bills would need to be set up to pay this as well, too. You would send this out with the city's tax bill as well, too. So, those will go out end of January, beginning of February. If you remember, we typically have a discount period that ends towards the end of February. I don't know what that date is this year. I can't remember. We just passed the bill.
And I'll just remind citizens that, you know, if we could, if the state would allow us, probably the best course of action that I would be able to support would be to pass this millage only on properties of, say, like 500,000 or more, or even 300,000 or more, some number that we would all agree on. But we cannot, right? So, the state, we've been, you've been hearing this a lot from us. Our Harrisburg legislators, our representatives statewide, create difficult conditions, especially for the city of Pittsburgh. And one of those is called the uniformity clause, so that we can only pass a millage uniformly, which means applying to everyone the same. And in this case, it's, I think, a travesty. This is exactly the kind of thing where we're trying to dedicate the funds to help disinvested neighborhoods and to make life better for households that don't already have access to parks, that we, it would be, it would be better policy if the revenue source was as equitable as the expenditure. And in this case, it just isn't right. And so, I cannot support it today. And I wish that we would defer this vote. I don't, I oppose it even being voted through today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there other members for discussion? Councilman Kraus and Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, thank you. So, I have wrestled long and hard with this, with this decision. I agree with Councilwoman Gross that timing could not be worse to bring something like this forward. And, but, more importantly, what has helped me to understand my obligation and agree to vote this through today is that I believe I do a higher disservice to the process of democracy by which something like this parks tax was decided through a democratic process. Now, having said that, I'm not completely in agreement with, I would like to have seen things done a little differently. I would have to agree with the Councilwoman on that as well. I just would have liked to seen the referendum handled differently. However, and once again, there's another but in my, in my brain, that says it did make it to the ballot. It was decided, and it did win the Third Council District. And I, to be honest with you, was quite surprised how it won the Third Council District, because there were wildly differing opinions as to whether or not we should or should not support it. But ultimately, it was put before the voters. It was a referendum that appeared on a ballot through a democratic process. It did win the Third Council District. And I, it will not be the first time I've come to the table with an opinion different from the constituency that I represent. But I have made a sworn obligation of duty to myself to represent the people that sent me here and not base my vote on what my opinions might be. And clearly, the district voted it. I believe I have an obligation to support the fact that majority voted it and to agree to put it through, even though I'm not as comfortable with it as I would like to be by any means. But I think the greater danger is for me to unilaterally usurp the will of the voter, who clearly came to the poll, put it on paper, and said would like this. And that's the obligation I feel today to say I have to support this, even though I may not be, I don't think the timing could be worse. And I have my own thoughts about the process and how I might have conducted it differently. But I feel the bigger obligation I have and the danger that I risk is to unilaterally usurp voters in the Third Council District that did indeed, by a fair margin, vote to support this. And that is my obligation today. And why I'm explaining to you that, after much thought, I will support this when it comes to the vote today. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Lavelle. So, first and foremost, I want to address something Councilwoman Gross brought up. And I didn't get this from the Law Department. I got it from other sources, which I believe to be reliable, is that we are not obliged to vote this through in no way, shape, or form. We are, if we want to collect, start collecting it in the first quarter, and, you know, so I guess, you know, if we want to start collecting on it in the first quarter of the year, yes, we are obliged to do it. But for me, you know, not only, I was opposed also from the beginning on this tax. My district was heavily opposed against it. I still remain in the same way. And, you know, I guess, in its current form, I spoke to the mayor about this, and I appreciate the conversation I had with him. In its current form, it's a lot more palatable for me than the original proposal from the Parks Conservancy, who hired a firm from Philadelphia to assess things and never even reached out to the local council people, which I felt was very odd. So, I was against that for many reasons. In its current state, yes, more palatable. I still don't really understand how we're gonna, you know, structure this money. So, I would need much more understanding on that. But besides that, I couldn't possibly vote to raise taxes for the obvious reason. And I do believe if this were, this question were put on the ballot today, under different circumstances the world is under, I think it would fail miserably. Most of you were there and saw my district come out and oppose this tax by 70-plus percent, I believe, in my district. So, for those reasons, for the, for the obvious reason that we're in the middle of a pandemic and to raise taxes, I just don't think is a good idea ever, really, but being the circumstances that we're under especially. So, I'm a no vote for it. You know, I wish we could, you know, delay this, put this off before we, so we all can have a clear understanding as to how we're gonna, you know, where we're gonna distribute this money and how we're gonna use it, and get us through this pandemic, and let's get people vaccinated, and then we'll talk about raising taxes. That's it for me, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate the difficult decision that this is for council members. I mean, I have to agree with basically everyone who has spoken already and acknowledge what a difficult decision this is, especially now. You know, I agree with Councilwoman Gross that I wish we had more tools in our tool belt. I wish that the state allowed for cities like Pittsburgh to have more tools to be able to raise different types of taxes in different ways, and that the uniformity clause maybe didn't exist, so we could be more precise about the way that we're applying taxes. I wish that we could, you know, apply taxes to nonprofits. I wish that we could do a lot of things to create new revenue that other cities, even like Philadelphia, are able to do, but we can't. And when it comes to providing for a quality of life for people throughout the city, this is one way to do it. Raising these kinds of taxes is one way to do it. I know for the people who live in District Eight, they, the majority of them voted in favor of this. I want to respect their wishes and vote in favor of this as well. I also want to point out that some information I received from, from the finance, I'm sorry, from, yeah, the Finance Department shows that the top 10 taxpayers for assessed value for properties really are downtown property owners. And they make up one tenth of the 1 million of the 10 million assessed in 2019. They're, they're big business property owners. So, even though I know it's going to hit the most vulnerable homeowners the hardest, the top one-tenth and possibly more of the assessed property owners are, are big business downtown. So, I thought that was worth bringing up, because in a way, we are capturing the business owners, the larger business owners, the larger property owners, that I think the public has largely been calling us to, calling on us to target in this budget season. That said, I will be voting for it, and I, you know, look forward to getting past this difficult time and seeing the tax kind of come to fruition and see the most disinvested parks across the city and the most disinvested neighborhoods being renovated and fixed up first, so that, you know, like I said, when I had a ribbon cutting at Whitman Park in District Eight this year, every neighborhood deserves a Whitman Park. And I truly believe that, and I think this tax will help us, help our own DPW and our, our own staff be able to deliver that for, for parks in every district and improve the quality of life in neighborhoods around the city. So, that's why I'm voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members? If...
Yes, Councilman, I'd like to say something.
President Smith?
Thank you. So, I just want to say, I think I was extremely opposed to this. And one of the reasons I was so opposed to this was because the park tax was because the campaign that was, that the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy was involved with. And I felt that there was a lot of concern that the money was not going to go to DPW. And COVID is a concern, but what I've noticed during COVID is more people are using our outdoor parks, more people have a need for the parks, and a lot of people don't have really great parks still, even though some of us have some amazing parks, and our parks overall are great. We have a lot of playgrounds that need a lot of work. And the only way we're going to be able to get those things done and, and help keep great places for people to use outside is by putting this tax in place. And it's also going to hire 50 additional laborers, which will bring jobs to this, additional jobs, which are desperately needed. So, I think there's a lot of things going on here. And the biggest thing, there's two big things. One, the public voted for it, which I have never, even though I didn't agree with the park, the library tax, I voted for it because it was on a referendum, and the public voted for it. And now, I feel the same way. If the public voted for it, then I have to do it with they, with they, there are, there's, that's what we respond to. And so, I have to do with that, their wishes are. But I also think that I have a long list for Emerald View Park with a master plan, Shoredome Park with a master plan, Westwood School that needs, or Westwood Field that they need, all sorts of work, Oakwood needs work, Shortier City with a spray park, Ferrywood with a pool that's been baked for almost two decades. And all these things, nothing, none of this thing, none of this will happen and get done unless we have more people working for parks. And that's because almost every time I've asked why something's been delayed, it's because we haven't had the manpower. And so, or the, I'm sorry, the workforce. And so, I think now, more than anything, the most important part that I feel most comfortable with is that now council will determine how this money will be spent. It will not go through Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy. It will go to, through DPW, which is really the biggest thing that we have the major concern with. And so, now that part's done. So, I want to be honest with you, I'm still not crazy about it, but I do think that I see more of a need. I don't want to stop something that's going to be long-term for something that we can get through after this year. And maybe that's a conversation we should have with maybe the Housing Opportunity Fund is helping people with, through this hurdle, if they have some obstacle with their, with their funding and see if there's some, some ability to address that issue. So, people at least have some way to turn for, for help, yet we don't, we don't throw the, we don't miss this opportunity to really do something great for our parks long-term, because the problem is we're in short-term. Thank you.
Very much. Councilwoman Burgess?
Mr. Chair, thanks. I have supported the tax for one reason, one reason alone. And that is because that parks are disproportionately disinvested in primarily African-American communities. In order to, we've all agreed that racism, structural racism is a public health crisis in our city. In order to alleviate this, we have to do new things. And we created the Housing Opportunity Fund. We had to create, increase the tax in order to put money into a new fund. Similarly, African-Americans are disaffected by COVID-19. They are more likely to get the virus. They are more likely to die from the virus. They are more likely to have, to have single-parent families. And those single-parent families are in desperate need of safe places. The COVID-19 crisis will not be ended by the summer. It will be probably over the next year, we would be trying to get the vaccine and getting us safe. And African-American families need quality places to take their kids, safe places. And those places cannot be indoor, they have to be outdoor. And so, we need to, over the next few months... And so we need to, over the next few months, get those parks ready for springtime activity at high, at higher rates. We are sure that the parks in the majority communities, the rad parks and those pristine parks in segregated wealthy communities will be just fine without this tax. Why do I know that? Because I spend the history of our city. They're fine now, they will be fine tomorrow. But this tax is designed to do, in its essence, and I will be hyper focused to make sure that happens, is to give equity to our city specifically. And, and I want to talk about equity a little bit because I, I want to lose this. In our city, when we talk about really equity, we're really talking about racial equity. That's the great, great problem we have in our city is racial equity. And so we are a segregated city. We have problems because of that. One of the, one of the consequences of that segregation is easy to disinfect. I've spent a career trying to right that wrong from changing the way we spend CDBG funding. Most of members of council weren't here when we fought, we led that fight to make sure that they no longer supplanted dollars, that African American communities got increased level of funding and paving in all sorts of city services. Because that's what CDBG money was designed to do, give them not to be a, an alternative funding source, but to be a funding source on top because of their poverty to give them additional resources. And so this new tax, and I know it's hard, when we vote for racial equity, it's always going to be hard. It's never going to be unanimous. I, I, it rarely will be. And that's been my experience on council. Voting for more money to put specifically in African American communities is always going to be hard. In part, that's what this does. This now disproportionately puts money in African American communities. This disproportionately begins to help African American people. I will continue that fight. I believe it's right. No, I know it's right. And I'm, I'm sincere about it. I've been saying this from the very beginning as to why I support the tax, why it's important and why we must go forward. And I look forward to, you know, at least another three years on council, leading this charge. I'm proud of all we've done. This is another, you know, the Housing Opportunity Fund was important. The new offices and public safety and the mayor's office were important. The avenues of hope was important. This now park equity is just as important. Because we are now moving to protect African American single women and their children to give them clean, safe, decent places to play with their children, especially during this crisis. I, I think the crisis actually in, in many ways makes me more likely to be supportive of this less, than less likely because I know how it needed. And I look forward to Public Works and Parks Recreation to be able to use these fundings to get these parks ready for springtime for these children who are desperately in need, in their, in their, in their, in their community, you know? Because they don't have to walk, you know, across two or three neighborhoods to get into, to get to a safe place to, to swing and a, and a safe place to learn to ride a bike or things. They can, they can walk to their own community down the street and have safe places to congregate and to, to play. And so I, I want to thank those members who will be voting for this. I, I do want to be very clear, clear that it is not just a vote for the park tax. We are also voting for racial equity in our city and this tax will be a way of doing that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other member? If not, without, I just want to add one thing because I share the sentiments of Councilman Kraus, Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman Burgess. But I also think it's worth just pointing out that if you look at the breakdown of who voted for this tax, it was overwhelmingly communities of color. I believe my district actually had the largest turnout, I believe, followed by Councilmember Burgess's and then maybe Councilman Kraus's. But if you look at that breakout, it was overwhelmingly communities of color that asked for this and said, yes, indeed, this is important for us to begin fixing up our parks. And as someone with two little children who are stuck at home all day, I can tell you their, all their activity comes when we go meet people at parks to go play outside. Even as it's cold, we still go to the parks to utilize them to get some exercise in. And so this is extremely needed and extremely important despite the fact that there's never good timing. But to fix up the one asset that people are going to be needing all, all of next year as we need to be outside and not inside, I believe this is important. With that being said, we do have a cool second round councilman.
I'm sorry, I just want to point out that, you know, I hear a lot of what you're saying about the equity. But I want to point out that during COVID, we realized that there's a lot of people with, with, of all different races, all different colors, geographically different, who are all struggling right now and all using our parks. And so I want to say that it's also really important to realize that we have people that have never stood in the food line, standing in food lines. We have people who have never, who've always donated to Christmas events and, and special causes to help other kids in need. Now in those lines, taking advantage of some of those programs because a lot of people are struggling in terms of, of those, those things. But more importantly, everyone's using our parks. And so I just want to say that even though I understand the part about, about the, the equity and the racial equity, I want to make sure that people understand that this will be shared across the city of Pittsburgh and in communities of color and in communities not of color, that there, there's just going to be a broad, I think, I believe, with council working together with the administration, just a broad area covered. Because this, this money is what we need to get some of our parks up to where we need them to be. So I just want to make sure that people understand that even though that's, those are all important issues, there's also an important, you know, conversation to be had that everyone is using our parks, they are being used. We had a playground done in, in Townsend and Elliott and already it needs renovations because it's getting that much use. So I just want to say it's important to make sure we're taking care of all the parks everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gross, second round, and then Councilman O'Connor.
I apologize, but I, I just would like to remind council and the, and the public that there were some hundred thousand, a third of the city population are not already conveniently within a ten minute walk of a park. Right? They don't have access to neighborhood parks. Many of us have, represent areas that do have a lot of parks and a lot of neighborhood sized parks. And that was one of the grievances that I had against the Parks Conservancy consultants is that they just deleted a third of the city population from their analysis because it was inconvenient for them. And so we should remember as we're, have this focus on providing access to parks for the city at large to just remind us that we also have to look at that. How do we provide at least access to open space, if not a fully built park for a third of our population? Many of those are also low income and minority households. So I just don't want to lose sight of that and I felt compelled to, to add that reminder. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Council, Councilman O'Connor?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I just, I, again, I, I think the tax being equitable is great. I was chair of parks for my first, I think, six years on council. So we know that parks are very important. And I love the parks. I think spreading them out all over is great. I just think with a pandemic and especially with my amendments last week to put more money towards added avenues of hope, small business, as well as the Housing Opportunity Fund, I just think another six months wouldn't hurt. We all know that we're not going to do any construction in those six months. I've had a park that has sat now vacant for three years once we demoed it. So we know nothing's going to happen. I, I just think waiting a couple of months is not a, a big issue. Especially now when we know that once we get out of this pandemic, people are going to lose homes, lose jobs. Rent's going to go up and that's going to be a huge issue for a lot of people. So. And plus, based on, as I mentioned, the amendments that we passed last week that I sponsored to support those individuals, I couldn't in good conscience vote for this right now. I understand that, you know, we need to do this. I just don't know what a couple of months would really do considering most of our parks are not going to be built in the winter time anyways. So that's my stance. So I'm going to be a no as well. But I think it's a great conversation and I think, you know, this money's going to do well for a lot of people across the city. And again, as Parks Chair for six years, I support them. I think they're great. But I think timing is just a little hard to swallow at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Somebody have second round?
I did have something to say.
Okay, Councilwoman Strasburger, second round?
Thank you. Just to respond to that, I, we did clarify with, we did clarify during the budget hearings that if there is any individual person who is really struggling to pay their property taxes, the city will work with you to defer payment until the end of next year. So whether we institute this now or whether we institute this six months from now, you have options to work on a case by case basis with the city to allow the city to be as flexible as possible. Now we need to ensure cash flow because we need to be solvent. But on a case by case basis, if you're really truly struggling and you have taxes due quarterly, you know, please contact your city council member or contact the city in some form or fashion to receive some sort of reprieve from that.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for the reminder. Third round, Council President Smith?
So I was, thank you. I was going to say some of what Councilwoman Strasburger just said. But I just want to remind people that there is help. We have the rental assistance and the mortgage assistance programs at the URA and they have millions of PEO that we, they help out and to pay for some of that stuff. So I just want to make sure that people know that there's help available and that, that this, that even though there may not be something done in some places for six months, that doesn't mean that we can't get this rolling and have it ruled out so that if there is an issue, we can address it through those ways. But I just want people to know that there is help. It's not as if there's not going to be help. And I'm not stupid. I mean, we have five votes for this. I want to make sure our district's included in some of this, some of this going forward and so that our area benefits as well. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kalkiel?
Yes. Now, I just want to take the opportunity to mention the big picture again. As my communities compete with Dormont and Green Tree and Mount Lebanon and, and all the surrounding suburbs, you know? And it's a small reason this taxed, but it is one on top of another, on top of another with us, I think. And we're giving people every opportunity to say, to pick the suburbs over us because of the taxes and because of the way we're imposing taxes. I'll give you a brief example. Twenty-five years ago, you know, I was in business for three or four years and I would get a bill every year, the, the business privilege tax. I don't know if everybody remembers that, but I remember looking at it and saying three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars. This is twenty-five years ago, mind you. And I thought, why, what is this tax, you know? And it's the privilege of doing business in the city of Pittsburgh. And I thought, well, the privilege is the city's, not mine. And I was real close to moving out of the city of Pittsburgh for that reason. So I could save four thousand dollars a year and I was going to go right next, next door to me in Dormont. It would have been real easy. Lower taxes all the way around. I don't have small children in the school district. But I also believe, which of course we don't, we can't control that. But that's a deterrent. I think our performance in our Pittsburgh public schools is a deterrent for people to move in. Throw taxes on top of it and we're giving people more reason not to choose the city of Pittsburgh to start their family and to buy their home. And for me, the big picture is the tax base. We have to draw people and we continue to lose population. And I think it's because of reasons like this. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Still on third round. Any other members? Seeing none, I do believe has a technical amendment to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd just like to offer a technical amendment that was attached to the last version of the, as, as an email attachment to the last version of the agenda that you received today. All it does is change every, every instance where it lists twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment simply changing the year two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
One?
Oh wait, that's the amendment.
That's the only amendment.
I'm trying to read and keep up. My apologies. I vote aye on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. So the amendment is approved. Is there any further discussion on the bill as amended? Councilman Wilson?
I guess I just want to say that I'm in favor of voting yesterday because it, you know, it ensures that when voters go to the polls that their voices are heard. And then this ultimately gets to the goal of making Pittsburgh a place for, for everyone, really correcting the, the problems of, you know, these, these problems of equity in, in the city. I think that, you know, by implementing a plan that does, you know, put and improve parks in places that need them the most to correct, to correct some of the wrongs that have been done in this city. You know, we need to do that. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the amended bill? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Three opposed, I believe. Councilwoman Gross, Councilman Kalkiel and Councilman O'Connor. The bill is recommended. Thank you. That takes us to Bill nine ninety.
Bill nine ninety resolution, providing for the creation of the city of Pittsburgh's Park Trust Fund and setting conditions for the deposit of revenue into and expenditure of the city of Pittsburgh Park Trust Fund.
Need a motion? You're on mute.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Sorry. I, I also want to say I do appreciate that the, for, that this is the structure of a trust fund to put the parks tax into, that it doesn't foreground the co-op agreements. As we had much discussion before we all, before we kind of went into the global pandemic of two thousand twenty, we talked a lot about those co-ops. And just a reminder that Councilman Kalkiel and I requested an audit of the co-op specifically with the Parks Conservancy just about this time last year. And that was completed by the controller in the middle of two thousand twenty and it's available on the controller's website. And one of the main takeaways was that as the years went by, people lost track of who had what kind of cooperative agreement about what. And so the controller should have had all of those agreements and didn't. And he had to get some, almost twenty from the administration. So he had some thirty some on record. It turns out there were over fifty agreements just specifically between the city and the Parks Conservancy. And I believe we still have untangling to do even after that audit of how many places dollars are flowing out of the city treasury and into the Parks Conservancy. As we just heard in a hearing last week about the Frick and Iron Rental Center Trust Fund. And I know it's, it was a project that a lot of people supported. It's in a rad park and some eight hundred thousand dollars is, is written in a check to the Parks Conservancy each year from city assets to the Parks Conservancy for their staffing and for the work on the park. We saw examples from Shenley Plaza in the heart of Oakland where the city taxpayers are paying for gas service, internet service, I think electrical service, but the Parks Conservancy collects all of the rent from all of the venues. And so I just think there's more places where we should have time to collectively discuss and all understand what is already happening before we would move forward with any new agreements and certainly new financial arrangements. And certainly even a penny of, of this tax revenue. So I'm grateful that the administration is proposing hiring more direct city employees to do more work in, of this work. But we should all keep our eyes on this trust fund moving forward. And I hope that each and every allocation would have to come before this body so that the public can And I hope that each and every allocation would have to come before this body so that the public can be heard and not allow kind of a backroom distribution of funds out of public oversight. I think that wraps it up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any, anything else from members? Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, I'll just give one final pitch for not to vote for this. I gotta say, you know, when I think about the time that this vote was put on, this referendum was put on the ballot, I mean, it was completely different. I just wanted to reiterate, if all council members feel that in today's world that this tax would pass, then I say follow your heart. But if you believe that this tax wouldn't pass with thousands of people out of work now, thousands of homeowners and, and no real, no real end in sight. I mean, hopefully by midsummer, but you know, we'll have already started collecting this tax. So to put that burden on people now, I think is the wrong thing to do. I, I do believe with all my heart, if this were on the ballot today, it would fail by a large margin because of the obvious circumstances. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Two opposed, Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Coghill. Thank you very much. That means the bill gets an affirmative recommendation. That will take us to our invoices. We do have a lot of invoices for approval. Need a motion on the invoices?
So moved.
Second.
We also need a motion. Members, note that under.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sorry, I would like to abstain from invoices.
Okay. On the invoices, under public safety, there is one purchase that exceeds our five thousand dollar limit. It was for an emergency purchase of hazardous materials, hazardous material apparel, excuse me. And so we need to waive the rule so that this can be approved along with our other invoices. So can we? We have a second. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. The invoice, any further discussion on the invoices as a whole? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? One abstention. Thank you. Invoices are approved. That will take us to our interdepartmental transfers. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Transfers are approved. We do have P cards for approval today. Need a motion on the P cards?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? P cards are approved. That will take us to our Public City Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilman O'Connor. We have a number of new papers, Bill nine ninety-seven.
Bill nine ninety-seven, resolution, amending resolution one ninety-three of twenty eighteen, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a three-year professional services agreement with Shot Spotters Inc. For the continuation and expansion of the city's gunshot detection system by extending the term to five additional years and increasing the not to exceed amount to four million nine hundred sixty-two thousand twenty-two dollars.
Motion approved. Discussion.
Second.
Second.
Councilman O'Connor.
I just, I, I don't know. I know this is, I don't know if Rev wanted to mention anything about this. I know this was his big project a few years ago. I know it's been going across the city. I know I just got some cameras and things in Hazelwood a couple of years back. I don't, I didn't know if he wanted to add anything to it, but I'm fully supportive, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill nine ninety-eight.
Bill nine ninety-eight, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a commodity agreement with Fire Water Response LLC for H E P A equipped air scrubbers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill. One new paper, Bill nine eighty-five.
Bill nine eighty-five, resolution further amending resolution number seven seventy-two of twenty sixteen as amended in title, adopting and approving the twenty seventeen capital budget and the twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two capital improvement program to transfer twenty thousand dollars from sport facilities improvements to Complete Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That will move us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. First new papers, Bill nine ninety-one.
Bill nine ninety-one, resolution further amending resolution number seven ninety-seven of twenty seventeen entitled adopting and approving the twenty eighteen capital budget and the twenty eighteen C D B G program and the twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three capital improvement program to reflect all insured parties for a public service grant contract by reducing Steel City Boxing by twenty-five hundred dollars and increasing Steel City Boxing Association and Spring Hill Civic League by twenty-five hundred dollars.
Can you please read?
Yeah. Bill ninety-two as well.
Sure. Bill nine ninety-two, resolution further amending resolution number eight sixty-three, eight sixty-three of twenty eighteen to reflect all insured parties for a public service grant contract by reducing Steel City Boxing Association by twenty-five hundred dollars and increasing Steel City Boxing Association and Spring Hill Civic League by twenty-five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
This is making a technical correction to fun, C D G funds that were allocated previously. Basically, what this does is, is make that technical connection, correction so that they can actually encumber these funds.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both bills are recommended. That takes us to Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. One new paper, Bill nine ninety-four.
Bill nine ninety-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with E S O for upgrades to the city's firehouse software system at an overall cost not to exceed two hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee. Gross, we have two new papers, Bill nine fifty-eight.
Bill nine fifty-eight, resolution authorizing a second amendment to the Pittsburgh Development Fund Cooperation Agreement dated January twenty-fourth nineteen ninety-five between the city and the U R A of Pittsburgh, council districts all.
Motion to approve. Discussion.
Second.
Thank you. So this is the bill that is looking at doing different things with the nineteen nineties capital bond that was kind of repaid by city tax dollars to the U R A. It is fully repaid and it was initially, when it was borrowed, targeted at major development projects. What you'll see here, and I'm going to turn it over to the U R A in a few minutes, is that they are proposing that the cooperative agreement basically delete the minimum, very large minimum size of project so that it can be used for small projects or even small business loans, is the way I'm understanding it. It doesn't require it, however. So I wanted to make sure that council kind of had eyes on it and the public understands it. And I'm, I got a very nice brief last week from many different members at the U R A, beginning with David Geiger and some of the other, I talked to a couple of board members and Assistant Director Walker as well. And I really appreciated that. The, I think the goal is laudable, but I always like to be careful when, as I just spoke in our, our last legislation, when we're talking about cooperative agreements over large sums of money, that we have a full, open, public discussion. One of the things I'm going to ask when I turn it over is, in the, and it's, the, the original title, I think on Tuesday specified that it was for the district improvement funds, and I don't see that here on our standing committee agenda, which is curious. One of my questions was, if there's fifty, you know, forty-five million dollars in this fund, why are you only proposing moving a few hundred thousand? A few hundred thousand that have been allocated to council offices. What are you doing with the rest of the millions? And what I was, what I was told, and my understanding, is that some of them are kind of locked in. Some of them are already committed and there may be ten million dollars that could be affected by the change in the cooperative agreement. So with that, I'm going to let the, any representatives from the U R A, I didn't actually ask a question except to say, please give us your summary of why we're seeing this proposed amendment to this cooperation agreement.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We do have Director Fliss Rom as well as Director Walker from the U R A with us today.
Good afternoon, Council. I, I will start off by saying that there's a number of U R A staff who can answer some technical questions on the amendment, but I think there are a number of different things on the table regarding the P D F. The, the first of them is to basically rescind the First Amendment to the P D F entirely. The First Amendment was the amendment that established the D I F, the District Improvement Fund, in order to pledge those dollars into our avenues of hope initiative, looking for some seed funds for avenues of hope. And we think that by seeding it with diff funds would be a way for us to be able to begin to implement some of these programs in conjunction with other resources that we hope to be able to to gather and to develop for avenues of hope. So that's, that's one thing we're trying to do. The other thing is we're trying to replace the old P D F guidelines that Councilmember Gross, you mentioned, were developed many years ago. I want to say probably back in the nineteen nineties before I was, uh, most of us were on the scene here, but really contemplated, you know, circa nineteen ninety-five economic development projects, mostly larger scale projects. Those guidelines stipulated a minimum project size, minimum loan size, and certain equity requirements that really were more oriented to traditional economic development projects, not the type, the, the more microscale interventions that we're trying to do at avenues of hope and, and other things at the U R A. So we're trying to create some flexibility in the guidelines to be able to do more avenues of hope scale projects, but knowing also that the P D F is our own, is our really only resource that we have to perpetuate and to replenish in order to be able to do both small-scale, macro-scale projects as well as larger-scale projects. So we need to strike a balance of both of them. It can't just be all one thing. But I think, I hope most of you know, the U R A's commitment to doing more neighborhood scale development in our city. And so we're just trying to open up the guidelines so to have more flexibility in our use of those, of those funds. And then finally, to loosen the guidelines to allow the U R A to be able to collect a modicum of fees and interest income that would typically go with managing or administering a fund of this size. We're currently precluded from being able to get any fees or any interest income for doing this. And again, in order for us to be able to grow the pie and to be able to, you know, maintain the work chest to be, to be able to do both traditional projects as well as maybe non-traditional ones, some of which kind of veered to the, into the orbit more philanthropy versus, you know, traditional economic development. We need to strike a balance. And for us to do that, we need to be able to manage the fund effectively. So we're asking the U R A to be able to, be able to collect, again, minimum level fees and, and interest income that typically would go with managing a fund of this size. So that's, that in totality is the, is the ask in front of you today. And I guess, if there are any questions, I guess I would also turn it over to any of my staff members or a number of them on the phone to maybe backfill some of the things that I missed, but that's kind of a very high level review of what we're asking to have done.
Right. Well, I pointed out that you, you're kind of proposing to delete the minimum size of project. You're not putting a cap on it, which is interesting. So you're not saying it won't go to large projects. And that is something that you could put in the cooperation agreement, right? And so instead of a minimum project size of one point five million, I think, was in the initial co-op agreement, you could say that it not go to projects, or at least some portion of the funding go to small projects. Because it doesn't, it doesn't, in the draft that I saw, it doesn't really say anything like that. Have you considered?
What, well, actually, we, we thought about, I think the, the answer to that, Councilwoman Gross, is that, again, we want to have this maximum flexibility. And, you know, I, I think we would all be misleading folks if we didn't think we still need to do traditional scale redevelopment projects and development projects at the U R A. Those that actually have a return on investment, that help grow and perpetuate the fund and our ability to be able to use this, this fund.
I, I hear that, but I do think it's fair that we ask you straight out when the initial title of the bill said that you were going to be putting money into avenues of hope, that there's really nothing, that it doesn't match the language of the draft agreements I saw. And I, that's why I just want to say it out loud and I want to make sure everyone understands that because I think that the, you know, you don't want the public to see you then do all of these dollars in one large major developer for-profit, you know, real estate development, like a, a big shady side project or a big celebrity project that is an already over-invested neighborhood. I, I guess I'm kind of treading the line there, talking about other people's districts, but let's say, let's reuse one of mine. Let's say, you know, we wouldn't want to see the ten million dollars that you have to move left, that's uncommitted, of the forty-five that you have going to it like a giant project in the strip district that doesn't really need the help, right? That's not the spirit of the title of this bill, correct?
I, you know, I can't comment on that. The only thing I would say is that the, the idea would be to, again, create maximum flexibility in this fund. You don't know what kind of projects are going to come down the, the pike, as it were. I mean, the intent is definitely to put them into more neighborhood scale, be able to balance, have a balanced portfolio, has a, a, you know, strikes a balance of neighborhood scale development as well as I would say traditional development. And oftentimes, the, the traditional development helps subsidize the, the stuff in some of the neighborhoods that actually, quite frankly, are hard to fund because they do veer into the area philanthropy. So, again, the idea was to create maximum flexibility it within the fund to do both more philanthropic investment, social investment, as well as traditional economic development, and then provide some seed funding through the D I F, the diff fund, to upseed the avenues of hope initiative. So, that's how I, so I always understood it. So.
Does anyone else want to jump in and talk about how maybe the funds would be held or reported on? I want to just say for the record, the U R A has done a much, much, much better job of reporting and telling, as I like to say, if you're doing the good work, tell the, tell the story of the good work. And, and I have to give credit where it's due. And I have, because I've had these tussles with the, the U R A for years and I have, hopefully, let people know that how supportive I am, especially of the work that you're doing in neighborhoods on micro projects and affordable housing and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and those, those great projects. But it, so the kind of year ends, budget presentations have gotten a lot better and are very good at telling the story of what you're doing. You do have a newsletter, you do have a website, but do you ever, do you report where the sources of funds are clearly? So let's just say, moving forward from today, now we just want to watch what you do with these funds. Like, how would we be able to find that?
So if I, if I might add a, add a note to the previous question, which was, I think centered on how we don't have a cap, we, we don't explicitly state a cap on any of the projects. I want to be clear that the guidelines will not supplant the loan review committee underwriting solid projects in doing but-for analysis so that we are not over-investing in projects that are not worthy of this type of investment. That thoughtfulness will still have to happen as, as the fund is administered. But what this allows us to do is, if there is an avenues of hope project where PDF, the way that it's currently written, does not have equitable um is, if there is an avenues of hope project where P D F, the way that it's currently written, does not have equitable development in mind. It does not take into account projects like the ones that are emerging on Center Avenue. By repatriating these funds, we're making that possible. I think that as we look at loan review committee bylaws and guidelines, we can certainly refine this over time. I think this is an excellent first step. Um, to the, to the next question, which I think is around fund reporting, uh, the U R A has done a lot of work during twenty nineteen and twenty twenty uh in preparation for Greg's arrival, and now that he is here, to be much more transparent in our, in how we are stewarding funds. I think that will only improve in twenty twenty one. Uh, we have a new finance department that is in the process of putting, you know, guidelines and controls around these things so that we can do a lot more transparent reporting, and that, that will happen in twenty twenty one. I agree with you, Councilmember Gross. That's something that I've also wanted to see the U R A do a better job of, and we've made great progress.
And if I could just chime in, while we're making progress on getting those financial reports um in place, you know, we do a, I like to think we do a good job of reaching out to council as well as making very public what the U R A board votes are gonna be ahead of time, and I think our board meetings are incredibly transparent and deliberative. So uh, to your point about the very large scale investments, all of those would require a board vote and go through a very public process that members on here are used to seeing play.
Um, and certainly Zoom meetings have actually helped, right? It used to be kind of hard to follow the U R A board meetings, I would have to say. It's a lot more transparent. So um, I, I am supportive today. I just wanted to be sure that we were clear, right, to keep eyes on, imagine that this was um us having a, you know, authorization for borrowing this much money. We would have a public hearing. We would be talking about what the bond guidelines are, um, and we would have a lot of public input. So this is repurposing money that's been paid. So in a way, it's actually fairly unrestricted, right? But it is still a, a large fund, um, and it will, we look forward to it being invested in neighborhoods. This is part of the kind of nineteen nineties money where um we, as a city, um, were accused of disinvesting from all neighborhoods and kind of concentrating all investments in the kind of downtown um, in the stadiums, um, and under Mayor Murphy, um, and um historians can debate um that moment, and um, but we have a different opportunity now. And while I, I understand that the U R A needs the flexibility, needs to get some um revenue stream off of these funds, you're also saying that you're, you're trying to reinvest in neighborhoods, so we need to see, we need to have eyes on that, I think. If we're not gonna put requirements in advance on legislation, um, which we could do, probably, um, we um at least want to be able to see how this money's moved. Again, I have only good things to say about how you've moved money in twenty twenty. We've seen with the cares that all of the funds that we gave you to help people out in the real world during um COVID, you've moved. Um, and I want council members to hear that too, right? That our state government didn't move funds into people's hands. Our county government really didn't move funds into people's hands, and the U R A did. You put money out there in cash assistance and in small business assistance, and I want to thank you for that. So um, I'm supportive today, but I just felt like we had to have a full discussion and um so that we understood that with this is, the cooperative, cooperation agreement is, was really about um, the constraint on the forty five million, I think it's forty five million dollars left in the fund. Maybe that's a good question. Who can tell me how much is actually in the Pittsburgh Development Fund?
So there are, there's ten million dollars in reserves. Uh, there's a fourteen point five million dollar pipeline, a lot of those projects being uh affordable housing and affordable um commercial development projects, and then there's about twenty three million dollars in loans receivable that come in over time. We see about a half a million dollars per quarter, I believe, in repayments. And so, you know, we're, it's not a super liquid fund, but you know, with the repatriation of diff funds, it certainly puts us in a better position to start doing some actionable development along the avenues of hope for projects that are in that existing pipeline. And we can provide a report to, to make that very clear. I know I'm sort of tapping, you know, ticking off bullet points there, but uh we can make a report available.
Thank you. I think that's the, that's the nice kind of short answer to my first question is, when we're talking about kind of a pot of like a forty five million dollars, why are you talking about moving the diff funds? And that's because those are the ones that are still in hand and not already out.
Yes.
Uncommitted, right? And so they are the most flexible funds. And so that's the, I think that's the kind of, that was the confusion, and I think it's important for the, the public to understand that part as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Other members for discussion?
Yes.
President Smith?
Thank you. I just wanna just um echo some of the concerns that Councilwoman Gross had made, and, and I'd also like to make sure that we're getting council members are getting reports, but those of us who have avenues of hope in our area, I would hope that um, I would hope that you would um use, that you would work with us a little bit on this and not just make decisions and determinations that, um, without talking with council members, because I think between city planning and the U R A, there's a lot being done, and sometimes there's some communications, and more so with the U R A, I will say that from my end at least, um, but I'd like to have a little bit more, a lot more, actually. Um, so I just want to make sure I say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members for discussion? Councilman Cargill?
Yes. Okay, thanks. Uh, Greg, good to see you. DeMonte, David, thanks for being here. Um avenues of hope, sounds great. I'm all for it. You know, I think the areas that you targeted are the correct areas. Just wanna make sure we keep focus on, you know, my avenue of hope, which is Broadway Avenue. We're, we're almost home there as far as the U R A goes. I think another uh, you know, building or two. We're out of the woods there and probably hear from me again. So uh, just wanna make sure we keep our focus on the neighborhoods and things that we have been working on as well, but I do support, you know, the initiative with the avenues of hope. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess, I see you trying to get in.
Yeah, um, first of all, I want to thank Greg and Diamani particularly for your leadership and your great vision of making equitable development across our city. Um, your staff's work to create the avenues of hope project, um, I believe is visionary and extraordinarily needed. I also wanted to thank uh Mayor William Pududo. Um, this does not happen without the commitment of a mayor who is looking to, in historic ways, invest money into those communities that have been disinvected, disinfested. I think that this is going to be avenues of hope, I think, may be the most significant project for African American people and their communities in the last fifty to maybe a hundred years in Pittsburgh. And um uh, the mayor should be very proud. I'm very proud of the mayor's partnership and leadership along with, of course, Councilman Lavelle in the small part that, that we played. Um, second of all, um, why have you here as we look to the new year? I am also grateful for um the support and um, I believe, partnership with Councilwoman Erica Strasberger, along with Councilman Lavelle and myself and Councilman Strasberger. I think the three of us will start to look at this whole idea that we began talking about uh, a, a while ago, about a year ago, I think, and, and now I think after COVID, we'll have to wait to see, you know, COVID happens, but I think there is time now for us to get to revisit this whole idea of doing a bond, of doing somewhere between fifty and a hundred fifty million dollars into an affordable housing bond. Um, I think there are two different ways in which that may occur. One is I think there may be uh some stimulus money that the government gives us for the U R A or for the Housing Authority specifically that we could leverage. Um, and just depending on how we come out of COVID, I think we can spend this year um talking about um if uh, how we can do that, and I think that's, it's a great conversation to have, and um, as we come out of COVID, because a couple of things are going to happen. Not only, when we say that African Americans are dis- are mostly or disproportionately disaffected by COVID, I'm not so sure people really understand what that means. It means that when evicting, evictions come, they will be disproportionately evicted. That means when um there's loss of jobs, they will be disproportionately unemployed. That also means that the research says that during COVID, almost fifty percent of African American businesses have failed, right? Because they didn't have the, enough um savings. And so um, we're gonna now have to, and in fact, that's what um, when I had the chance to meet the President Lek, that's actually what we talked about. Uh, he and I chatted about how to invest in um neighborhood African American businesses to revitalize those main streets. And so the avenues of hope, although was not called that then, was specifically the type of investment that um he supports, and that I, I guess, one of the reasons I got a chance to meeting was to talk about those sort of issues. So I am, I'm, I, I really am proud, there are moments, I'm very proud of our city. I also wanted to think, I, I don't wanna think, I do want to think, I did not wanna go un- un- unadmitted that I did uh recognize the investment that uh Councilman O'Connor made um with um putting some money into the avenues of hope, and we appreciate that. Um, but there's a lot more to be done. This is a small step, but an important step. And so um, but, but as I end, Greg and Diamani, um, Greg, thank you for your vision. Uh, Diamani, thank you for being my smarter friend and and all the work that you've done that together as a city, we are moving our city forward.
Thank you very much. Any other members? Seeing none, I also just want to thank um Director Fliss Rom, Director Walker, David, and all those at the U R A for working on this and moving this initiative forward. Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is recommended. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That will now take us to Bill nine eighty seven.
Bill nine eighty seven, resolution authorizing incorporation agreement with the U R A uh in connection with the U R A's application for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant of up to one million five hundred thousand dollars for the former Homewood School Project, Council District Nine.
Ah. I was like hit and not hit, like hit and hit it again over and over. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended.
We need to um motion to waive the rules for Bill eight nine eighty nine. Um, so that'll, so that, is that the right motion, first of all, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Well, uh, council members, I move to uh waive the rules of council to um put Bill twenty twenty dash zero nine eight nine on the table. That is the bill about the sewer module to allow the affordable housing um downtown to move forward.
Second.
Thank you. We have uh waived the rules um for, to bring this bill back up. All those in favor say aye.
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 And you oppose? Thank you. The bill is now back on the table.
Councilman Lavelle asked me to put this bill back on the table so that it could um move the project forward. So Councilman, if, I don't know if you want to remind members.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Gross. Um, just so members remember, last week, there was a sewer module bill that came up. Unfortunately, I, I had been slightly distracted, and so I wasn't sure what I was looking at when it came up. This um is for the new homeless shelter, um, that members maybe remember casting a number of different votes in order for this to move forward, which is in part being sponsored by both U P M C, um, Allegheny General, uh, P and C is putting a lot of money into this project, and this is the last thing that's holding them up from being able to move on construction. And so I wasn't, I, so I missed this last week, so I apologize, which is why I asked Councilwoman Gross to bring it back up today. So thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Um, that exhausts our agenda, today's agenda. Uh, we do have a number of meeting announcements. Council's final meeting of two thousand and twenty is next Monday, December twenty eighth at ten A M. There will be no standing committee, no standing committees meeting. To register to speak at the regular meeting, please call the clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight before nine A M Monday morning. You may also send comments to City Clerk's Office at Pittsburgh P A dot gov. Tomorrow at ten thirty A M, a cable cast post agenda discussion is scheduled via the Zoom platform on the implementation of the mayor's community task force on police reform. I believe Councilman O'Connor will be chairing this meeting. Our first regular meeting of City Council in two thousand and twenty one will be Tuesday, January fifth at ten A M. Is there anything else? Seeing none, I just want to wish all members and all those in the city of Pittsburgh, um, happy holidays. Please do stay safe. Um, please do wear your mask and try not to be around as many people as possible. With that, a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Bye. Happy holidays.
We are adjourned. Thank you all. Happy holidays.